I will call this school committee meeting to order and please rise. We'll go to the chair. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Moving on to correspondence and recognition. First, did anyone notice we had an election earlier this month? I don't know if anyone did. But we've got three outgoing outstanding public servants. Senator Mark Pacico who served the district well for many, many years. Senator Walter Timmeltie who just picked up Bridgewater in the last, after the last census and served the town of Bridgewater and VR very well himself in his short time here. And Representative Angelo D'Amelio who served both towns very admirably over more than a decade. So we want to thank them and congratulate them on their service. I take it on by my prerogative to invite Senator-elect Driscoll, who will now represent Bridgewater, Senator-elect Duner, who will now represent Rainham, and Representative-elect Gallagher, who's going to represent both towns, to come and introduce themselves, say hi, get to meet us. Unfortunately, the two senators-elect had other commitments that they could not make it tonight. However, Mr. Gallagher is here. Mr. Gallagher, if you want to come up to the podium, maybe we'll just introduce ourselves on the school committee for everybody, and then you can introduce yourself and, you know, say a couple words. So starting to my right.
Hello, my name is Rachel Corey and I'm a student representative of Athens. Rachel King, School Committee on Rainham.
Michael Loesch, Bridgewater.
Jess Adams for Rainham.
And to my left.
Peggy Matelli, lifelong resident of Bridgewater.
Laura Conner, Rainham.
Brad Powers of Bridgewater.
And to Fitzgibbons, the chair. Notice I didn't have to introduce everyone that way. Now everyone knows up there. All right, so Mr. Gallagher, the floor is yours for a couple minutes just to say hello and talk about what you hope to do for our district.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board and to the public that's here. I'm excited about this new venture in my life that'll start on January 1st. Until then, I am still representative-elect and wrapping up my full-time job at the moment. But I just want the school committee to know and residents of both Bridgewater and Rainham that I will be a strong advocate for public education at Beetham Hill. I think that my record and my track record, going back to my days of election in the town of Bridgewater, to my recent days as a councilman in the town of Bridgewater, and now my new role as a state representative, my role as a selectman in the town council, council, I have always been a strong supporter of the initiatives of the school committee, school administration has put forward over the years with the building of the new high school back in 2002 and 2003, two current projects that are ongoing with the new track that was put in place and the tennis courts and advocating for capital funds to be able to be appropriated to the schools where they need. So that track record will continue on Beetham Hill. As I campaigned throughout both towns these past nine months, I've talked about how I want to make sure that the district gets their fair share of Chapter 70 fund, which is the main funding source for your, from the state anyway, for your operations and school budget, and Chapter 71 monies that help with your transportation. I would be a strong advocate of Beetham Hill to make sure that the district gets its fair share of funds for the district. I think though that's, that's going to be my role in any other, any other areas that I can help with Beetham Hill as a servant and be there. There may be challenges with budgets as we all go through from time to time. We'll get through those. Sometimes it's unpleasant, but I will always be there for you and for the children of the district and for the administration and staff as well.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher. Appreciate you coming in. All right, next up on the agenda, congratulations and recognitions to the state champion, Bridgewater-Rainham Regional Cheerleading Squad, Coach's Office of Zaca Latte. Did I say it right still?
You did.
All right, go on up and introduce everybody. We gotta, we gotta you up here to say, say everybody's names and how great they did and everything. So come to the podium. Over there, the podium.
Oh, me?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You're in charge.
Okay, so we have Senior Captain Izzy Phillips, Senior Captain Gabby Kamara, Sophomore Cadence Kambrolis, Sophomore Kaia Paulson.
Who's that?
Freshman Madeline Clay, freshman Olivia Kogler, freshman Dory Curtis, freshman Cheyenne Brown, freshman Lily Stewart, and my assistant Christina Pokarski, but she actually really was the head coach of the game day team this year. She's really stepped up this year and we're just really grateful to be here and we're really excited because we haven't won a state title since 2017. So we're really excited to bring you back to Bridgewater-Rainham.
All right, great. Congratulations from the table here and then come shake our hands.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Great job. Congratulations. Good job, Gabby. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Great job. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you.
Great job. Congratulations. Good job, gentlemen. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. All right, so in an effort to keep everyone apprised of the general tenor of email correspondence we received during the, during the month, we do have a quick list of emails that touch on the general themes that have been hit. We're not going to speak of any particular individual issue, but the poor quality of the sound at last month's meeting, I'm not going to lie about it. That was my bad. I apologize. We had an email from Mr. Fowler offering to help on that and obviously emails congratulating the cheer team that we just, we saw here. So those were the, those were the main themes of this month. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Powers for Veterans Day program recognition.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did want to just take a moment to recognize and honor all of our amazing veterans in both communities, Bridgewater and Rainham, especially all those that have graduated from the high school and have gone on to serve our country. Several of our schools organized events the Friday before Veterans Day weekend, so was great to have an opportunity to attend some of those. Obviously, I want to thank our staff for doing that. Certainly acknowledge Rave and Miss Pat Riley for always organizing all of those special events on the Rainham side. We did have a special guest, Sergeant Daniels from the U.S. Air Force. She's actually the sister of one of our special education teachers and also a proud VR grad, so it was nice to have her as a guest of honor.
Thank you. Now, moving on, we do have our student advisory committee here, and I'll turn it over to Ms. King to go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to invite Rachel Corey, the co-president, to the stand.
Good evening, everyone, tonight. I hope you're having a wonderful night. Unfortunately, Quinn couldn't make it tonight, so I'm just going to be reading his book for him. He wanted to say good evening to everyone and that he's going to be reporting on the upcoming event, the Rainwater Players Fall 2024 Production, The Little Mermaid. He wishes that he could be here today, but unfortunately, he's at dress rehearsal for the show. As he is a person starring in the production, the administrative team, crew, cast members, and himself have been working tirelessly to ensure that the show can be as successful as it can be. Since October 3rd to now, every rehearsal has been used to get the show to where it is today. And now opening night is only three days away on Saturday, November 23rd. The production of Little Mermaid has two shows on Saturday, November 23rd. The production of Little Mermaid has two shows. That's going to be at 2:00 p.m. and 7:00 p.m. on that day, and then also one on Sunday, November 24th, and there's going to be one performance at 2:00 p.m. I hope that, he hopes that all of you will be able to join under the sea. The Rainwater Players hope to see you all there to attend, and if you haven't bought your tickets yet, you should get them to see this unforgettable performance. Hopefully, you can make this reason production, an event that will be part of your world. Up next, he wanted to welcome you back, you to my own work. Sorry about that. So I wanted to say good evening to everyone as well, and that I'm going to be reporting on the high school spirit, which has been occurring for the past few days and will continue up until next Wednesday, as planned by the senior class officers, including myself. This past Monday was sports day, so the hallways were full, full of team jerseys and colors. Yesterday was neon day, where many students could have been mistaken, mistaken for a walking highlighter. Today was tropical day, and so many students and staff were dressed up in Hawaiian shirts and florals. Tomorrow is Country Club versus Country Western Day, and Friday is pajama day. The following Monday will be my personal favorite, barbecue dad versus soccer mom. Tuesday will be class T-shirt day. Wednesday is going to be the pep rally day, so students are going to be decked out in all red and attire to represent our school colors. I cannot wait to see how our school will blend creativity with school spirit and create an enthusiastic atmosphere in our school. I hope you have a wonderful evening, and I now welcome some of you.
Good evening. Sorry, I just changed the page. Good evening. Today I will be talking about TJ Square Robots today. So we have an upcoming auction and dinner. So this is our biggest fundraiser of the year, and it's how we raise most of our team's money. So we're actually able to build our robot for the year and compete in our events. It's being held on December 6th, and we're expecting a lot of people to come. It's an event to show our appreciation for our family, friends, alumni, and sponsors, and, and we're really excited about it. Thank you, and I now welcome Gila Tijones to the floor to stand.
Good evening, everyone. Over the past few weeks, several colleges have come to visit the yard to greet students and inform them about their institutions. In October, Bridgewater State University arrived here by onsite admissions, making the stressful college process smoother for some students this season. Throughout October and November, schools such as Boston University, Massachusetts Institute of Technology, Worcester Polytechnic Institute, UMass Boston, Universal Technical Institute, University of Rhode Island, Savannah College of Art and Design, and Suffolk University came in for regular day visits during lunch or at the end of the day to answer any questions that students may have and pass out flyers about their school. These were great opportunities for students to discover and inquire about new places where they could study and study. Thank you for your time, and I now welcome Sammy Smith to the stand.
Good evening. This upcoming Friday, November 22nd, the high school will have our annual homecoming dance. This is a time for students to de-stress and have fun. So it's a great opportunity for the student council, students to buy some water, snacks, food, and tickets themselves. On other note, the sophomores have finished one of our fundraisers, but starting another, our public food reserve. Orders will be accepted until 3rd of the center. Staff, students, and parents will be able to see the menu and place an order in advance, and these orders will be picked up and delivered to the schools for people to receive their goods. If you're interested, you can order through the Class 2027 Facebook or Instagram page, Bridgewater residents or Rainham residents. The designated pickup days are December 19th and 20th. We hope to see you there. Thank you, and that concludes our statements for this meeting.
Thank you very much. Anything further on that, Ms. King?
No, I just want to thank the student advisory council for being here tonight with their report. We will be meeting again a few times in December. I know they did have discussions about having Mr. Fitzgibbons come and Mr. Powers just to talk more about the budget process and get more involved this year in that. So we will be sending an email about that depending on when you're going to be meeting. And I hope they have a happy Thanksgiving. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on now to public comment. Twelve minutes, three minutes per person. Everyone knows the drill, hopefully. If you know it, I can repeat it, but I feel it gets tiresome. Seeing no one coming. Oh, yes, go ahead. Public comment. Yeah. Rosie, do you agree to say it first?
I couldn't see behind you.
Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Courtney Fratton, resident of 15 Colonial Drive in Bridgewater.
Thank you.
So, good evening. My name is Courtney Fratton, resident of Bridgewater. I'm here today to express my whole belonging concern about the state of the special education department. I have two young children, and they are both on IED. They were only on these IEDs because I requested this evaluation three years ago. For the last three years, I have trusted that the school has been doing the right thing. This is until I realized how far behind my children are. After educating myself and spending thousands of dollars, it has become clear that my children have dyslexia. This should have been picked up by the school. A federal law called Child Finance actually states it. I expressed many concerns about my children, including that they have dyslexia in the IED community, and I was told by two separate educators that there was no way my daughter had dyslexia. The school testing did not pick up this disability for either of my children, and independent evaluation missed it. To this day, I am still advocating for an appropriate education for both my children, and quite frankly, every day their civil rights are being violated. Literacy is a fundamental right, and they are not receiving that. When you look at the VR NCAS scores for grades three through eight, only 37% of students are actually meeting or exceeding expectations in ELA. 63% of students are not meeting ELA expectations. Children in general, never mind the most vulnerable ones, cannot read, and this issue is the neglect of implementing evidence-based practices in how literacy still evolves. One cannot deny the link between learning disabilities and mental illness, and the consequences are highly concerning. When in fact there is an abundance of research and evidence on how to teach children how to read, my children's deficits are so clear it's absolutely need remedies with the correct intervention delivered by a certified provider. However, despite this knowledge, the school team continues to deny this and fails my children daily. I actually had the opportunity to observe the language-based classroom at the Rainham Middle School, and it was shocking to me that the special education teacher left nine children for half of the class with a paraprofessional. The regulation states one teacher to eight children, to one, one special ed teacher to eight children, not one paraprofessional to nine children. When I questioned this practice, which I was told faceless daily, I was told a paraprofessional could teach special education under the direct supervision of a special education teacher. I will say there was absolutely no direct supervision as the teacher was not even present. I did ask for the regulations surrounding this, and I have not received them. This is just one example of what occurs within the special education department. I'd be happy to discuss, discuss others at a later date. It is clear that the special education department is in a disarray right now. Melanie Hart, resident, and Jay Lander is no longer with the district, leaving two special education administrators for the whole district. I don't think the school has even announced to the, the parents that Jay Lander is no longer with the school. I'm wondering if this announcement is going to be made, because he was the administrator for one of my children. In closing, my heart breaks not only for my children, but all of the children that are not receiving an appropriate education and not learning how to read. Every child has a right to learn how to read, and the school is violating this right and failing to make children. I know that parents have sent letters to the school committee requesting a review in the special education department. I'm not sure if this is going to happen, and I'm not really sure what it's going to take for the school to take the necessary, to make the necessary changes so that this does not occur. The children are being failed, especially those with learning disabilities.
Thank you.
Tracy Lincoln, 255, office is Free Rainham. Today I stand before you to address an issue, pressing issue that affects not just our educators, but more crucially, our students. The very heart of educational system. The current climate in our district is placing teachers in challenging and unfair situations, one that discourages them from advocating for what is best for their students. Teachers are not just instructors. They are primary support systems for parents who seek guidance and direction in navigating the complexity of education. However, many educators find themselves walking in a tightrope, apprehensive of facing potential consequences for being honest and transparent with parents. This apprehension is not merely a personal concern. It creates a chilling effect that stifles open dialogue, open dialogue about needs of our students. When teachers have the courage to communicate with parents, they're often themselves, they're often find themselves in a position where they must caution the parents against speaking out. They fear the repercussions that might follow, repercussions that not only affect their professional standing, but also compromises the support and services that their students desperately need. This reality is troubling and unacceptable. Why should our students' right be compromised just to protect our teachers from minor, from minor discrepancy? I'm sorry, minor is the problem. I can't read either, and I should have been taught in high school. Disciplinary action. In this climate of fear of uncertainties, we must ask ourselves, who truly suffers? The answer clearly is our students. Their needs are being overlooked at, overlooked as educators has a case to speak up. The very individuals entrusted, entrusted with nurturing and guiding our children are being silenced, and in doing so, we are inadvertently restricting the freedoms of our students to receive the support and services they rightfully deserve. In addition, we must address the insidious issues of gaslighting and vague language that some parents encounter when seeking clarity of services provided to our students. When educators and or administrators employ ambiguous justifications for lack of necessary resources, it is only serving our further confused and alienated parents. This kind of communication undermines the trust and fostering of the environment where parents are powerless and frustrated while the needs of our children continue to be unmet. I would like transparency and accountability from our district to ensure that every student has the access to support they need to survive. The district is violating some of our students' civil rights when they are not providing the appropriate education needed to read and write.
Thank you, Mrs. King. Further public comment? Seeing none. Move on to the consent agenda, which is approval of minutes dated October 23rd, 2024, North River Collaborative Order League Report, Acceptance of Gifts. A $400 donation from Global Enterprises Power Wash Proceeds to RMS is, should be actually 440, my bad. $500 to Bridging Lives from Trinity Episcopal Church, and I believe also we are putting in the personnel report as well. So with that said, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Paid by Mr. Loesch.
Second.
Second by Ms. Conrad. All those in favor? Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. All right, educational reports, school improvement plan, Law Liberty, and RMS. Who's going to go first, Ms. Hartgraves or Ms. Sherratt? Okay.
Thank you. I'm Holly Hartgraves, principal at Law Liberty. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the school committee, and superintendent Powers. The Law Liberty Elementary School Improvement Plan is aligned with the district's Student Success Plan. This plan is developed in collaboration with school administrators, staff, and families. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the members of the school council who assisted in the creation of this plan, Mrs. Collins, Mrs. Madden, Ms. Fritz, and Ms. Schadlemyer. As you know, the district's Student Success Plan, which drives our school improvement plans, is built upon four pillars: safe and supportive schools, curriculum instruction and assessment, operations, and human capital. Although we have multiple school-based action items built into our plan, I'd like to share the action items we are prioritizing. Under safe and supportive schools, we are continuing a focus on improving our multi-tiered systems of support for students. This includes developing meeting protocols and clearly defined roles and expectations of team members, a needs-based intervention block at each grade level at least three times each week, developing intervention plans, resources, and guidelines at each grade level in both reading and math, and administering and analyzing data from the DESA Student Strength Assessment. Under curriculum instruction and assessment, we are continuing to focus on improving the implementation of our newly purchased instructional materials in math and English Language Arts, which include the Envision's Math Program, the Wit and Wisdom ELA Program, and phonics instruction in grades two and three. Under operations, we are developing a building-based emergency response team, consistent monitoring of the learning spaces and environment through the lens of maintenance and security, and continuing to implement recommendations from our Safe Roads to School consultants. Under human capital, we are implementing increased one-to-one meetings between administration and teaching staff to support constructive, growth-oriented feedback resulting in improved student achievement. Those are the highlights of our school improvement plan, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions from the school committee on the Law Liberty School Improvement Plan? Seeing none. Thank you very much, Ms. Hartgraves. Ms. King. Ms. Sherratt, you're up next.
Good evening. My name is Charlene Sherratt. I'm the principal at the Rainham Middle School, and I'd like to present to you our highlights from our school improvement plan this year. Our school improvement plan is aligned with the district's Student Success Plan. The plan was developed in collaboration with school administrators, staff, and families. I would like to take this opportunity to thank the members of our school council who assisted in the creation of this plan. Those members are Mrs. Alexander, our grade five teacher, Ms. Morales, our health teacher, Ms. Fisher, an RMS parent, Ms. Cashmanian, an RMS parent, Ms. Lombardo, an RMS parent, Mrs. Cantelli, a community member and grade six parent, and Mrs. Schadlemyer, a community member and parent. As you know, the district's Student Success Plan, which drives our school improvement plans, is built upon the same four pillars that Ms. Hartgraves just spoke about: safe and supportive schools, curriculum instruction and assessment, operations, and human capital. Although we have multiple school-based action items built into our plan, I would like to share the action items that we are prioritizing this year. Under safe and supportive schools, we plan to continue to develop our advisory period where students are practicing their social and emotional learning skills. This period is blocked off as a 20-minute extension of homeroom one day out of our five-day cycle. Every teacher in the building is assigned a group of students so that class sizes are a bit smaller. We are using two different resources for the advisory block, the middle school responsive classroom book, and Second Step, which is an online resource. Teachers have the liberty to choose lessons from either one of these valuable resources and often start or end with a group game. Our goal is to encourage students to talk to each other and learn to share and discuss topics in a mature way. Under curriculum instruction and assessment, we want to broaden the use of the IRIN Pathway, our personalized learning tool that helps students improve their math and reading skills by providing online lessons tailored to their needs. Incentives such as our Fall Frenzy Competition going on now or March Madness are offered to build confidence in their learning and help students to reach or exceed their grade level goals. We are also continuing to implement with Fidelity our new ELA Math and Science Programs with the support of our district humanities and STEM coordinators. Scheduled walkthroughs and monthly PD discussions will help to provide teachers with the resources and training that is needed. Under operations, we recently completed the track door setup for the main entrance and the new gym floor. We are now exploring options for the preschool playplace, a STEM classroom, and continuing to enhance outdoor areas such as the track and back courtyard wall. Under human capital, we are looking forward to our Second January Wellness Day and Ed Camps where we elicit the help of all staff members to provide instruction and exposure in areas of wellness and teaching expertise. I am happy to answer any questions that people may have regarding our highlights or other questions about our school improvement plan.
Questions from Ms. Sherratt? Seeing none. Thank you, Ms. Sherratt. Thank you, Ms. Hartgraves, for coming in. We appreciate all the hard work that the school councils do. Whenever school councils come in, I always say to people, that's where I get started helping the VR school district, is on the Williams Middle School Council with Mr. Kelson as the principal. Moving on, we're at administrative and school committee reports. Mr. Powers, report of the superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the school committee, members of the audience. I do want to provide a brief update this month on some happenings across the district. First, as you know, as a result of the election, the voters overwhelmingly appealed the NCAS requirement for graduation. We are still awaiting additional information from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education in terms of what really will come of that. Obviously, I know you've probably seen some talk that, you know, that action may be taken up by the legislature, but we're but we're anxiously awaiting what will happen. That new is to go into effect at the beginning of December, so we're hoping to get additional guidance, you know, in the near future. We did encourage our students after the election to take the retest. There were two exams scheduled because they still were eligible for the Abigail Adams Scholarship, so we didn't want our students to miss out on that. Obviously, our students that have already passed, excuse me, our students that have already passed MCAS will earn their competency determination. Any students that have not earned their competency determination up to this point will now be eligible to do that through a review of their academic courses, and that's really where we're waiting for additional guidance from the state because they're going to allow districts to determine graduation requirements and what exactly we'll need to certify those courses. So that's something that we're waiting on. But again, as soon as we have additional information, DESI did put out a very brief FAQ, basically what I've just shared with you. So there's not a lot of information to share on that, on that topic. But as soon as we have more, we will let you know. Moving on, I have been answering questions about MCAS if anybody has any.
Questions on MCAS?
Thank you.
Miss Shaw, I have this come up. Is, I've heard of it, other parents' kids that are already left the district. So their competencies, is it just for the class of 2025, or is it for, you know, someone that graduated, not graduated, but left the district in like 2019?
It does seem as though at this point that if they did not earn their competency determination but received a certificate of attendance, that they will have the opportunity to have their transcripts reviewed and be able to earn that certificate.
And we don't have a ton, like that could be around 2015 or whatever?
We don't have.
We don't have more information.
I will say, just in speaking with Ms. Watson, on an annual basis, we have, I think there's one student that I know of, say, in the last five to seven years that only received the certificate of attendance. So this is not really an issue for Bridgewater, Rainham, as it is of the districts.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Along, along those lines, moving along. I did mention the Abigail Adams Scholarship. Please to announce that we had a number of students eligible for that. We had 106 students at the high school eligible for the Abigail Adams Scholarship. To be eligible for this scholarship, students in the class of 2016 and after have to meet the following criteria: Score the advanced category in one of the three high school state assessments, obviously either ELA, Math, or Science, Technology, Engineering. Score the proficient or advanced category on the remaining two high school state assessments, and have a combined MCAS score in these assessments that ranks in the top 25% of their school district. So we're very excited to have 106 students that have qualified. Really what it does is it allows them to earn a credit to the state colleges and universities. Obviously, this changes year to year, but basically what students would be looking at, say, at the university, UMass system, would be a little over $1,500. At the state universities, it would be a little over $1,000, and then at community college it would be about $740, which doesn't seem like a significant amount of money, but certainly helps in college tuition. That's it on the Abigail Adams Scholarship, unless anybody has any questions.
I'll just say, as a parent of a child in college, any amount of money is a good amount of money to have.
I agree anymore. I did want to, just while we're on the topic of MCAS, just to provide a quick overview of the assessment accountability data for the district. Obviously, you have access to this information. All of this information here in the slide deck is available on the DESI website, so it's really just a summary. So it won't bore you reading every data point because you have access to this. And obviously, we'll be sending out links in this Friday's BR Buzz to this information on the DESI website as well. Just as an overview, you know that students are assessed in three areas: ELA, Math, and Science, Technology, Engineering. Grade students in grades three through eight, and grade 10 for ELA, same for Math, and then Science, Technology, Engineering, grades five, eight, and 10 as well. Obviously, these assessments are measuring students' progress towards meeting grade-level standards and expectations. Tonight, I'll show you results for the last three years. Obviously, additional information, like I said, can be found on the DESI website. I did want to start by sharing with you the overall statewide results. You can see how this grid is reported. Obviously, we have the percent of students meeting or exceeding expectations for each grade-level band in the subject area, what that change was from last year, and then obviously what the change was from 2019. This information was shared with us from DESI. Again, I won't go over every data point there. You can certainly read that. But you can see, obviously, the students meeting or exceeding expectations is certainly now where it needs to be statewide. And obviously, the data, you know, in some areas didn't change or slightly changed from last year. You can still see this significant changes from prior to the pandemic. So it's not just a Bridgewater, Rainham issue or local issue. You can see that as also statewide.
Mr. Powers, is it something that there's chatter about at the state level where there's a feeling there was such a loss of learning through the pandemic? These young, the children who are in the younger grades maybe lost a foundation that they're still trying to build back over time, or?
I would say it's fair to say, Mr. Fitzgibbons, obviously, that's something that, you know, we just talked about at the state level, and obviously, you know, we talked about it internally and regionally as well. Depending on the grade level, you know, these students were at those very questionable grades, kindergarten, first grade, that was certainly interrupted, or when we were able to get back into school, it was a hybrid, and, you know, half of a school year when you're trying to instruct or learn those foundational skills, it is certainly a challenge. So I would say a lot of this is attributed to that, but certainly, you know, as we move away from that, it's, you know, we can't always use it as.
Oh, no, I wasn't using it as.
No, no.
It was just more of a reason.
So again, statewide results, similar format for Bridgewater, Rainham. You can see again, the data does not look significantly different from the state depending on the grade-level band. You can see the percent of students statewide meeting or exceeding expectations, and then obviously for the district, the two columns to the right, the change from 2023, that's obviously our change, and then same thing from 2019, that's our change as well. So certainly a lot of ground to make up from pre-pandemic. Obviously, in some cases, you know, the change from last year was very minor. Obviously, we were down a couple areas, but, you know, we did make some growth and gains in Science, Technology, Engineering, which is great. The reason why you see an A there is obviously we weren't able to measure the Science, Technology, and Engineering assessment that changed from 2019, which was not comparable to here.
Any other questions on this side?
And just to kind of show you again, I won't go through all these data points, but basically what you have in your packet here is the ELA, MCAS results for grades three through eight, obviously the grade band three through eight, and then grade 10, so you can see that. Also, just to show you, you have all the subgroup data as well. And then we've done that same thing for the high school, done the same thing for math, subgroups, high school, subgroups, Science, Technology, Engineering. Accountability, as you know, just to kind of quickly touch upon this, obviously, you know, the accountability system is a measure of how the districts are performing, not just on MCAS, but in several other indicators. Obviously, one is being achievement, as we just talked about, MCAS, the student growth, what type of growth of the students making, high school completion. They look at, obviously, a couple different areas there under that. Progress towards English proficiency for our English language learners, chronic absenteeism, and advanced coursework completion. Were awarded points, DESI can, districts can earn, based on DESI's calculation, up to four points for some of those target areas. Obviously, you know, non-assessment areas are based on past trends, reasonable expectations for improvement. We're obviously given targets that we should improve by each year. And so I know this doesn't necessarily translate great up here. Again, on the website, it's, you know, more clear for you. So you can see, for example, over here, where they talk about points earned, total possible points, we'd obviously like to see four out of four in every category. That means we're meeting all of our targets and we're earning every point possible. You can see that it's, you know, non-high school and then high school grades as well, and then obviously for the non-high school grades, it's lowest performing high school, and then lowest performing for the high school. And again, the award points based on each indicator that you see up there. As you know, we've made great strides with our chronic absenteeism, really reducing those numbers. Merrill Elementary was recognized and awarded for that, but you can see that consistently across the district. We truly believe that, you know, over time, that will pay off first because now that we have more students in school on a consistent basis, they're there, ready and available to learn, and we should, just by default, see achievement go up. But obviously, there's other things that we do to make sure achievement is raising. Districts are placed in certain categories in terms of level of intervention required. We are placed in that moderate progress towards targets and that there's no intervention or assistance required this time for our district. Again, you've seen this before. We really believe that this is our plan to be successful in having our students achieve. Obviously, we want to continue to implement with fidelity our curriculum materials and resources. School Committee has been very supportive of that, rolling that out, making sure that we're getting high-quality instructional materials in the hands of our teachers. We obviously want to make sure all of our systems are aligned and equity-minded, and based on the instructional course or everything we do, every decision we make is about student, staff, and content. We obviously want to take time and put resources and investments in the people who will shape our students' learning experiences, our teachers. And obviously, we want to partner with our stakeholders, our students, first and foremost, our staff, families, and the community, and then obviously engage ongoing reflection and, you know, obviously look towards the future of improvement. As you know, we've said this before, we all have that collective responsibility. Certainly, first and foremost, it's the district staff, School Committee. I know you embrace that and take that very seriously, the community as well, and obviously the towns, because we know that we can only be as successful as we all want each of us to be. So that concludes my assessment account for the presentation, unless there's any questions.
Questions? Ms. Davenport?
Were we in the moderate progress towards targets? Was that the one where we were last year too? We're in the same caliber? All right, that was my open question.
Ms. Conrad.
Mr. Powers, I'm just curious, because I'm assuming if we looked at this data on the DESI website, it will, well, I know it breaks it down by school. So again, between Bridgewater, Rainham, especially at the middle school level, last year in Rainham, there was some challenging staffing issues. So we would see a difference in some of these scores, Rainham-Bridgewater potentially?
Correct. Yes, all that information is broken down by individual school, grade level at each individual school, and then obviously accountability data for each school. Obviously, I share district open, but all that information is.
So my question is, is how is this data being used, how are you using this data with our principals to address, again, you know, growth opportunities at their schools?
Yeah, sure. So that's exactly, we obviously, as a district team, certainly at the central office, review all this data when we have opportunities to be with our administrative team, our principals, assistant principals. We're looking over this data with them, looking at, again, just, you know, how we're doing currently, how we've done in the past, what trends can, you know, we decipher from that. And then obviously, I know they're doing that same thing at their buildings, working with their staffs to look at results, being able to look at, you know, item analysis based on questions, again, trying to identify trends. It's always tricky with the release of the data in that, you know, we take the assessment in the spring, we don't get the information until late summer, fall, before it's officially released, and now we have a whole new group of students in front of us. So to really kind of use this information, how you've seen it last year, which is obviously important, you now have a new group of students sitting in front of you. So sometimes we really don't necessarily, you know, that, we have to look for really trends and patterns. And if it's something that we see over time, each student cohort group, you know, deficient in an area or scoring really well in an area, then we're able to identify a trend and a practice that we either need to continue or the one that we need to improve upon. You know, obviously, looking at one cohort versus the other cohort on an annual basis doesn't necessarily always yield, you know, high results data, but it's something that obviously we do.
And I guess, Mr. Powers, my question I would ask for you, when you look at this data, what does it mean to you? And where do you think that we need to, areas that we are successful or areas you think there are growth or challenges, what kinds of challenges?
Yeah, I, I think when you go back through that, that data, I think certainly the areas of Science, Technology, Engineering, we're showing, you know, progress, and you see certainly more pluses and greens than you do minuses and reds. Again, I think that speaks to the commitment at the middle school, high school level in terms of, you know, rolling out new curriculum, really committed to science practices, really invested in, you know, strong professional development for our staff. We're doing the same thing in our other content areas, science, Ms. Joyce has rolled that out in science and obviously math, and Ms. Richards with ELA and Social Studies. I think when I look at the numbers, you know, certainly nothing there to overall celebrate when you look at the percentage of our students that are meeting or exceeding expectations. You know, it's not even, I wouldn't even want to say, oh, well, we were above the state by, you know, a couple points. That's great. But when you look at the state results, there's certainly nothing to celebrate as well. So I think, you know, for, for me, until we're, you know, 70, 80, 90% of our students meeting or exceeding expectations, then, you know, we can't ever stop resting on our laurels and, and look back and say, oh, well, we were, you know, great before COVID. Well, I think, you know, we can't look back. We have to look at what we're doing right now. And so we certainly have a ways to go. Those scores are not going to change overnight, but I think the plan we have in place is one that we're committed to and continue to work on.
Ms. Davenport?
Do you guys get data based on, like, more granular, based on, like, class, you know, because they get it per person, right?
Sure.
So I'm thinking of maybe if, you know, one teacher really excels in one area, do we share and maybe, you know, I don't know.
Yes, exactly. So, and that's something that we always talk about because, you know, when you look at a, a grade level as a whole, it may be exceeding your expectations or maybe lower than your expectations. So that doesn't mean every teacher at that grade level is doing that. So we really, you know, as an administrative team, we talk about that. Sure, you can look at a, you know, how your eighth grade is doing, but you really need to drill down to the teacher level, and they do have access to that.
Other questions? Seeing none. Mr. Powers, thank you very much.
All right. Ms. Fitzgibbons, last update I just did want to share. Obviously, this information in the School Committee's packet, as you know, I did share a letter with the towns, just providing an overview of our current and projected fiscal well-being and to really advocate for the towns to, to start those dialogues sooner rather than later because, you know, obviously, as I recorded before, we're, you know, up 200 students, down 24 staff members. That is not something of a trajectory or a path that we can continue on to make sure that we're meeting our path to excellence and being ambitious. And so I did want to acknowledge that, and obviously, we have an upcoming meeting with the towns, which I'm very much looking forward to and having that opportunity to collaborate with them.
Without any objection from the School Committee, I hope, could you post that letter with a link at the front page of the district website so folks can certainly actually see it?
Yes, yeah.
Be referenced to it and actually understand the challenges that we're facing so that it's not just you standing up here in front of a massive crowd of people, and, and those tens and tens of people watching at home, but the entire community can see it and understand it and really feel what it means to them. I'd appreciate that.
Yes, of course.
And then, were you able to answer Mr. Loesch's question?
Yes, I apologize. One student that has a situation different from the district currently.
Okay, thank you.
And, Mr.?
Yes?
What we see in accountability and assessment scores, I know it's one day, and there's a lot of, like, pros and cons about MCAS. We're not going to argue that. The overs are, but it is one day. It is one way to measure. What I would ask you, Mr. Powers, too, is our teacher-to-student ratio is directly affected by our budget, and it does directly affect some of his and task force and their ability, our teacher's ability to, to address students' needs?
I would say it's definitely fair to say, 100%. Obviously, as you see our class sizes go up, you know, the level of support that we were able to provide during post-COVID with SIR funds and being able to have interventionists on staff, not being able to have those positions, certainly has a negative impact, and I think we're seeing some of the consequences of that.
Thank you. Anything else? All right. Moving on, Budget Subcommittee Report. Ms. King?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On Tuesday, November 19th, the Budget Subcommittee met at 5:30 at the Rainham Middle School Library. Attendance were Mr. Fitzgibbons, Mrs. Martelli, Mrs. Davenport, Superintendent Powers, Assistant Superintendent Barry, Mrs. Babalowa, Ms. Robichaud, Mr. Chanka, Mr. Schultz, Ms. Healy, and Mrs. McDougal, and Recording Secretary, and myself. We did have a time constraint due to a scheduling conflict and Rainham Town meeting for last night, so several non-time-sensitive items were held until December. The first item that we did discuss were the fiscal year 2026 capital plan. Long-range, so refer the document to Budget to Review since it did have budgetary implications. Mr. Powers went over the document and pointed out the 2026 capital items. Facilities and maintenance are combined into one tenure. Facilities and maintenance are combined into one ten-year plan. The plan will continue to update as they change. They are categorized as much as possible in this new plan, and also added measurable outcomes, which will be best to capture. Also added was actual spend and the funding source, and this will be updated as we go along. In that report, everything in green highlight was for fiscal year 2026, for capital and for IT. From a budget standpoint, we did speak to Mr. Powers regarding how does this capital number compare to last year regarding the bottom line for Bridgewater and Rainham, and it was about the same year as last year's capital at 1.8 million. We did approve a vote to recommend this from the budget sub to send back to long-range, which will be bringing this forward today for a vote. We also had a base report discussion. Mr. Powers and Ms. Babalola discussed the status of the base program following our updated fees and implementing the registration fees with the new school year. The program is still running in the red. Summer had come in on a rolling basis, and we're looking to also change, looking to change this to a pay-up front. They're also implementing a new system of electronic calendars to more better capture who will be attending and what days. The budget subcommittee noted that they need more detailed info again for each school location with revenue and expenses for each particular program to know where exactly the budget shortfall is coming from. This is the way we can only figure out where we're breaking even or self-sustaining at each site. We're currently at this point, at the end of October, in the red fifty thousand dollars since the start of this school year. No action was taken last night, and it will be reviewed again in December with further detailed information. I just want to note, we've been discussing this now, as Ms. Babalola brought this to our attention, it's been over an entire school year now. We did make significant changes to fees and implementing the registration fees, and it did help, but we're still in the red, so we're really going to look at the political mindset each site in particular, where we are, and make decisions on how we're going to go forward with that program. So more to come next month. Fiscal year 2025 update, Ms. Babalola updated the subcommittee regarding the current fiscal year 2025 budget, and she shared a chart with trends from fiscal year 23 to 25. We are still maintaining the budget freeze right now. Any emergencies go through Mr. Powers due to that. The budget document provided showed July through October. We had spent 24.1 million at that point, which is 25% of the budget. October was 9% of the budget. We are monitoring every line to make sure expenses have no overages, and if so, what the plan is for that line. Ms. Babalola pointed page four, the sub-line, class coverage, was high at this point, so she is monitoring that. As we know, we have changed that recently for class coverages for teachers covering, so we're going to be monitoring that line if we need to budget that, to make transfers for that, but going forward, we need to make that a higher budget item. We have uncovered a majority of the budget so far. Transportation is, transportation was at 956,000, which was half of that, which is special education. We've budgeted close to accurate, looking at last year's trends. Also of note, the utilities, the new utilities contract starts November first, so our costs with that will increase 27% this year. For out-of-district tuition, we do have circuit breaker, which will cover that, and that will be reclassified in December. Overall, looking at the trends, we are in good shape. Ms. Babalola, however, would defer to our attention that she does not think we will have another $2 million at the end of this fiscal year in E and D. Rainham has indicated that this week that they will be making a change to how they fund their capital. They are not going to fund that upfront at the beginning of the fiscal year, instead they will only pay capital items following completion of the entire project and submission of proof of receipt. So we're not sure when we will receive the full capital amount from Rainham this year, so we will need to take a look at that as well. And also, I know Mr. Powers had indicated he did have a discussion with Mr. Chaka, will be on top of that to make sure projects are as quick as possible, on time, on track, and submitting invoices on time to try and get everything in within this fiscal year. Fiscal year 2026, we did have a discussion on the status of the budget Mr. Powers is working on for the next fiscal year. He did say, as he just pointed out, he did send a letter to both towns regarding the financial situation and projections for next year. As of last year's budget, we are down 24 positions, which were positions we did not fill due to attrition, any resignations, retiring, and several positions which we did not fill or call back. Being down those 24 positions, we have definitely felt that already this year at every grade level from the kindergarten and first grade, which we received multiple emails about class sizes, to middle school, the changing of the teams to make scheduling work. Even at the high school, we're lacking electives, we're lacking the math interventionist and different offerings that we've had before. I know the teachers are all feeling that. Parents are definitely coming to us with concerns about special education, that has been a big thing that they have been talking to us about. So we've already felt that with the loss of those 24 positions. Just to get back to where we were before, we would also need an additional fourteen teachers to lower class size to what parents have been asking for, and that's not even trying to get ahead and, you know, address the class size, things that we need, and also special education. So we're trying to be ahead of the curve and make the towns aware of what we're looking at next year, so we're all in a partnership of that and Mr. Gallagher, just so you know at Beacon Hill, what we're looking at. So that's where we are, and like Mr. Powers said, we do have a December third meeting with the towns, just so everyone, between us and our two towns that we're partners with, that they're aware as well of what we're looking at for next year. We did also, Ms. Babalola informed us that she did receive her certification from the state for the E and D. We currently have $4,245,717 that were certified to E and D. We did, as of last year, vote to take 2.2 million, sorry, we did vote last year to take 2 million out of that to supplement this year's budget, which will leave 2.2 million in E and D currently. So as Mr. Fitzgibbons has pointed out in the past, that's not a good practice to keep taking out of E and D for next year's budget, we might not have as much next year. So we definitely need to think out of the box with next budget that we're working on. We did approve October 21st, 2024 minutes. We held several items that were not time-sensitive until next meeting in December regarding sports fees, health insurance study, the fee schedule, parking fees. We did not have any other items that came up, and the next budget sub-meeting is to be determined. Monday nights, we do have conflicts with a member, and negotiations started, so December might have to be on Tuesday, so I will do a budget sub now. And that concludes my report. If anyone has questions.
Questions on the budget? Seeing none, we'll move on. Mr. Loesch, sorry.
Do we have a comparison of where the base program was by October prior year?
We've asked for all that, I think is the fair way to say it. Where were we last year with the fees that we were charging? Where are we this year? Where are we on a school year basis instead of just a rolling, what was this, the summer where we hadn't changed anything versus the current school year where we've actually implemented new fees, et cetera? So there's a lot of work to be done there before we can answer that question, but that's a good one to ask. Is that fair? Ms. King?
Yes.
Anything further? Seeing none. Okay, back to Ms. King again. MASC school conference report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I attended the MASC/MASS joint conference in the Hyannis Mass. number six through November eighth, 2024. I did list out in year drive and I reported some of the workshop and events I went to. Just to know a few that were, I did go to one regarding an override, I know everybody wants to talk about that, but it was very informative, and I know we are not alone in our financial challenges for next year, so I did go to that. Current laws and policies to special education and in education, which were really informative, and collective bargaining trends as we're going into collective bargaining with our teachers, that was very helpful as well. Otherwise, I did attend on the last day of the conference, the delegate assembly, as the, our school committee delegate. Last year, we did not get through many, there was a lot of discussion and debate, but we did not get through a lot of the resolutions that were put on the table. So this year, the executive board made a very concerted effort to manage the meeting more effectively, and we were able to get through all those resolutions, which had a lot of debate and amendments, but very orderly. I know we also had at our last meeting, had a lot of discussion about how our committee felt for each resolution. All of them actually passed. Some were a very close race. As you know, the MCAST one was a big debate even following the election. A lot of the members there felt that even though MCAST was no longer a graduation requirement, they needed some sort of way to measure districts, which, you know, we have just talked about with that report. How do we measure how districts are doing across Massachusetts? How are SBR doing compared to, you know, a Boston high school versus a Springfield high school? And make sure everyone is getting an equitable education? And maybe one district has some money, one doesn't, you know, how are we measuring all of those? So all of them did pass for resolutions, so these are the things that the MASC executive board is going to be taking to the legislature to say, these are things that are important to school committees. Some might be more discussed more often, I know MCAST is a big thing. The other one that was a huge one that I know they're going to be talking about is adjusting chapter 70 for inflation. As we had also discussed last year, inflation rate, the amount that our chapter 70 increased was like 1.37% or something, which didn't even level fund anything. But yet, in years past, when it has gone higher than 4%, 5%, it was capped, so there was a little big discussion that they'd like to have with the state, you know, to try and, how do we get back some of that on the years that there's an overage? So there was a lot of good debate, a lot of things that they'll bring to the State House to talk to our legislators about. I did put in that I would like to join their executive board for their policy to try and be part of that, because I think that's important, so I will update you on that as well. And that concludes my report, but I would like to say, if anyone is interested next year, the conference is great for, you know, different trends and updates and trainings and workshops, and needing a ton of good networking. I've met so many school committee members to have discussions or get ideas from, and I've talked to the executive board for a while and made contacts with them, so if you have a chance, it's really a good idea to go. And that concludes.
Questions on MASC?
No, but I would echo that, if you have a chance to go, if you're on the committee, go.
Thank you.
It's informative.
Yeah, as a new member, as a veteran member, the amount of information I've gotten from them and the contacts I've made, it's definitely important.
Any other questions, comments from Ms. King? Seeing none, we'll move on. Okay, so long-range planning subcommittee report. As you can see, Ms. Mainville is not here, she had something come up at the last minute and couldn't make it. As a member of that committee, I'll just refer you to her report on what was done in the meeting. Really good meeting, got through the capital plan really well. Some of those changes that Ms. King referenced were recommended by Ms. Mainville to generate one of the outcomes we expect, and where is the money coming from, and so on and so forth, to better understand, you know, what's really going on with these projects. That said, the long-range planning committee did, in fact, approve the capital plan based on, also making sure that the budget committee would recommend it, which they did, so therefore I will entertain a motion to approve the capital plan as presented.
So moved.
Made by Mr. Loesch, second by Ms. King. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Thank you very much. Policy subcommittee report, Mr. DiMarino unfortunately is sick this evening, but I believe in his place, Ms. Davenport is going to give that report.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgibbon. So tonight, I'm just going to present a motion to waive the second read of the policy, KDA, public's right to know.
Is there a motion? Oh, you made the motion.
Yeah.
Is there a second? Second by Ms. King. Any discussion on that? Basically, we don't need to sit here and read the whole thing, is what it means. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Thank you.
All right, awesome. So KDA, public records, Mr. DiMarino outlined the changes to and the rationale behind merging policies, KDA, public records, and KDB, the public's right to know. KDA is no longer relevant at the Bridgewater-Rainham school district, as the Bridgewater-Rainham regional school district must follow Massachusetts state law, public records 950 CMR 3202. Combined policy was established. Proposed KDB, public right to know by researching other school districts' policies coupled with updates of the law. So motion to replace the Bridgewater-Rainham regional school district KDB policy with proposed KDB, the public's right to know, change this letter into KDA and eliminate KDA public records from the policy at all.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Martelli. Discussion. It's my understanding, Ms. Davenport, there were no changes from the first reading anyway, which we discussed last time, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Thank you. Moving on to new business, approval of payroll warrants dated October 31 and November 14, 2024. Ms. Martelli is going to recuse herself from this vote. Is there a motion to, made by Mr. Loesch, second by Ms. Davenport? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Ms. Martelli, we need you back, because Mr. Loesch is going to recuse himself. That would be approval of general ledger warrants dated October 31 and November 14, 2024. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Made by Ms. King?
Second.
Second by Ms. Martelli. Any discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Loesch can come back now. All right, we're at that time of the meeting where we go to public comment again. Yes, Mr. Patrick, please come up. Just identify yourself for the record, please. Three minutes, you know the drill.
Yeah, I'll be heard. Dave Patrick, Vice President of the REA. Just two points I'd like to make. First, Mr. Fitzgibbon's mentioned earlier, referenced the effect that COVID had on our kids. One thing I'd like to point out and mention, and I'm sure we're aware of this, is the dependency on cell phones, okay? It's a problem, and it's one that I really think that, I think the school committee should really look into your policy and see what we can do, see how we can work together to create a policy that works, because the cell phones are becoming a real problem. Not become, they are a problem. And secondly, I'm sorry I came in late, but I was hearing concerns regarding special ed. And look, and I've stood up here and talked about our issues that we have with special ed, and they're well-known. First off, I'd like to commend Mr. Powers, because he held a voluntary meeting during the last PD where he invited all of the special service teachers to a meeting at the high school, and he answered, at least tried to answer a tough question. at the high school, and he answered, at least tried to answer the tough question. Now, I'm not saying everyone got the answers that they wanted to hear, but, you know, the real answer was, we need staffing. And it's simple, well, no, it's not simple, but we do. We need staffing, we've said that. Hopefully, the towns are hearing what we're saying. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patrick. Any further public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to announcements. Anyone have any announcements for us? I'd just like to encourage everyone to go to the Rainwater Play this weekend, it's a great take. I think my son's planning on going twice, he enjoys it so much, he loves going to those things.
Some of my Thanksgiving.
Yes, okay, everybody, enjoy your Thanksgiving. That said, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn, made by Mr. Loesch. Second by Ms. Conrad. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.